We'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. Welcome H. Wayne Wilson and his listening audience at WCBU as well as Cable Channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council microphones are open for roll call.
Mayor Artis.
Here.
Councilmember Ali.
Here.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Grab.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Montalongo.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Rigenbach.
Here.
And Councilmember Ruck Regal.
Here.
You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'd like to invite everyone to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we've got six proclamations this evening and a very nice crowd to receive them. We're going to start first with Mr. Mike Failey. So Mike and his family would join me up here in the center. Whereas Mike Failey celebrated his 99th birthday on September 4th of this year and has many remarkable accomplishments to his name. And whereas for 75 years, Mike has been a member of the Knights of Columbus beginning in 1943 and joining the 4th degree in 1970. Having remained in good standing with Spalding Council Number 427 in Peoria and having achieved the status of honorary life in April of 2019, Mike Failey was honored at the Knights of the Night of Knights for 75 years of service to the Order in Streeter. And whereas Sir Knight Mike Failey continues to serve on average between 40 and 50 honor guards each pontifical year with Spalding Assembly Number 206 in Peoria, Illinois, and continues to lend a hand at events and celebrations. And whereas Mike also honorably served his country, he was assigned to the Medical Corps and landed with Allied forces on Omaha Beach on June 7th, 1944. He achieved the rank of Sergeant and is credited with helping 4,800 patients in a 13-month period, including the treatment of slave labor at an underground factory in Germany. For his service to our country, Mike received the Good Conduct Medal, the European Theater Medal, the Victory Medal, and the German Occupation Medal. And whereas Mike was married to Marie Meyer Failey for 56 years, and though that union, through that union, they had seven children: Jim, Maureen, Colleen, Pat, Tom, Mike Jr., and Kevin. He's a grandfather to 20 grandchildren and a great-grandfather to several more. And whereas Mike retired in 82 and was freight manager for the TPNW Railroad, he is a member of St. Bernard's and also attends Mass every day at St. Thomas. Now therefore, I, Jim Artis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby recognize the achievements and service of Mike Failey in Peoria, Illinois. So there was a couple other late additions that didn't make the proclamation. One, his son, Mike, has worked for the city for a long time, and Mike is here with us tonight. And the other was that they had an announcement out at the Knights of Columbus Hall on Radnor Road last week and actually named a room after Mike Failey for all his dedication to the Knights of Columbus and to the community. And also, just on behalf of the whole community, we have a really nice group here tonight, but I'd also like to ask us all to stand and recognize Mike's years of service to our country as well.
Ladies and Mikes, hear me. I want to man a few words, so I want to thank everyone who made a special effort to attend this meeting. And I'm not used to all this publicity here. Thank you all.
Councilman Rigenbach is going to join me for the Dental Arts Lab 85th Anniversary. Whereas the Dental Arts Laboratories, Inc., DAL, began its tradition of service to the dental profession on December 10th, 1934, when Adolf H. Knupel opened the Dental Arts Lab in downtown Peoria. DAL has the unique distinction of being the oldest established group of dental laboratories in the state of Illinois. And whereas with 10 facilities and over 340 trained technical staff, the DAL family of laboratories has the capability to provide personalized attention to their clients while creating the highest-quality product with the most technologically advanced materials. And whereas their team is constantly working to learn the latest techniques to provide the best product for the people that they serve. Whether working on ceramics to create crowns and bridges, fabricating sleep apnea devices, or making implant prosthetics, their commitment to technology and education ensures that they maintain their leadership role in dental technology. And whereas the work that the staff does at DAL is not only technologically and artistically superior, but also gives their customers a quality of life and confidence. Now therefore, I, Jim Artis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby recognize this family-owned business and celebrate the 85th anniversary of Dental Arts Laboratories in Peoria, Illinois. We have Scott Clark, the President, and Bruce Colgan, the CEO, are with us tonight. Councilman Rigenbach would also like to make a couple comments before we ask those gentlemen to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, gentlemen, for the commitment that Dental Arts Lab has to our community. You know, we talk about economic growth and the things that make a city strong, and it's companies like Dental Arts Lab that provide so many head-of-household jobs, and they kind of fly under the radar because unless you're sitting in the dentist's chair, you might not even think about, gosh, I hope there's a good place to get my crown fixed. But that's the kind of stuff they do, and the commitment the employees have to our community is also outstanding. So congratulations. Please extend our heartfelt thanks to Mr. Knupel, and we appreciate you, gentlemen, being here with us tonight.
Yes, we'd like to accept this recognition very gratefully. We're sorry that Tariq Knupel could not join us tonight, and especially in behalf of, in memory of his father that started the laboratory, we accept this. Thank you.
Next, we have Weston Walker, records and awards in his freshman year. Whereas Weston Walker earned numerous titles and acknowledgements this year for his athletic ability in golf. A student at Peoria Christian School, he was named All-Conference Player of the Year, the 2019 Journal Star Boys Golfers of the Year, and the Class 1A Individual State Champion, all titles he achieved in his freshman year of high school. And whereas he also placed first in the Birdhouse Open, the Peek and Invite, the City Meet, the Conference Tourney, and Sectionals. He placed second at the IVC Invite in Regionals, all the while displaying calm composure and exceptional athleticism. And whereas he also managed to break some records during this season. Not only does he hold the lowest average for a freshman at 35.75, he also had the second-lowest round ever recorded at the state event at Prairie Vista Golf Course. He even managed to play 13 astounding nine-hole rounds under par. And whereas with his dedication to the game and his already impressive achievements, we look forward to seeing him excel through his high school and beyond. Now therefore, I, Jim Artis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby recognize and celebrate the athletic achievements of Weston Walker.
All right, first off, I want to thank the city and the mayor for giving me this opportunity. And I'd also like to thank my family for supporting me through the season. And I want to thank my coach for sticking with me through the season.
Next, we have the Peoria Notre Dame Boys Golf Class 2A State Champions. Whereas the City of Peoria wishes to extend in greatest appreciation and respect to the Peoria Notre Dame Boys Golf Team for their teamwork, perseverance, and exceptional season. And whereas the success of the team was established when they came together on the 18th green at Kellogg Golf Course shortly after tryouts. With their eyes on winning the state championship, every single team member committed to hard work and trusting the process. And whereas over the course of the fall season, the Peoria Notre Dame Irish, led by seniors Mikey Wales, the captain, Zach Bisher, Sam Newton, Galvin Smith, Ben Burkett, Ben Dotson, and Junior Rhett Bianchi, won seven tournaments, including a record-breaking 25-shot victory at Regionals. And whereas after advancing from the McCombs Sectional to the state championship, the Irish found themselves holding a four-shot lead heading into the final round. With the course playing firm and fast and winds gusting 20 to 25 miles an hour, they found themselves down seven shots with just three holes to play. Not knowing where they stood on the leaderboard, they instead turned their focus to trusting the process and simply worried about the next shot. They showed tremendous resilience by playing the last three holes two under par, while their competitors finished at 11 and 12 over par respectively. And whereas when the Irish faced the most pressure possible in a golf tournament, they were truly dialed in. This resulted in 14-shot swing and ultimately a seven-shot victory in the Class 2A State Championship. And whereas the team also attributes their success to everyone who supported them, including their classmates, faculty, families, the City of Peoria, and their late principal, Randy Simmons. Now therefore, I, Jim Artis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby congratulate the Peoria Notre Dame Golf Team on winning the Class 2A State Championship.
Thank you, guys, for all coming out tonight. I'd like to introduce my teammates first. On the left here is Ben Burkett, The Only Junior, Rhett Bianchi, Zach Bisher, Galvin Smith, Sam Newton, and Ben Dotson, and myself, Mike Wales. Our coach couldn't make it tonight, but I'd like to thank him to start. He was really the reason that this all got done. And I'd like to thank all the parents that managed to come out tonight, especially my parents that aren't here tonight, and just everyone who was able to help make this possible. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Little Change Big Impact Week Bradley Public Relations Seniors. Whereas Little Change Big Impact Week was started by four Bradley Public Relations Seniors: Hannah Augustuson, Danny Alvarado, Katie Carricker, and Tyler Smith, to focus on environmental awareness and steps that individuals can take in their everyday lives to improve our environment. And whereas during November 18th through 22nd, the Little Change Big Impact Week Committee used social media to encourage others to focus on the little lifestyle changes that make big environmental impacts. And whereas the success of these efforts are relied on trusted relationships that were built with area businesses, including One World Cafe, Wildlife Prairie Park, the Peoria Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, and Better Earth Logistics. To ensure the sustainability of Little Change Big Impact Week, Kim Martin of I've Decided will lead efforts to continue this into the future. Now therefore, I, Jim Artis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby celebrate and recognize the success of Little Change Big Impact Week in Peoria, Illinois. Hannah Augustuson would like to give us a little more information. Hannah?
Hi, thank you so much for this opportunity. I would like to thank the mayor, his office, also Bradley University, our professor, Dr. Bivalco, who is with us tonight, everyone on our team, Katie Carricker, Tyler Smith, Danny Alvarado, and especially Kim Martin. I will be symbolically giving this campaign over to Kim Martin.
We're very happy to carry on the torch.
Great job, guys.
Thank you.
And now we have John Gee Trudell, the winningest coach in Rivermen history. Councilman Seer is going to join me for this. You want to get the team down here behind us, Coach? Let's get the team down here behind us. Come on, go on. Councilman Seer is thinking they weren't that big when he played. Whereas John Gee Trudell has always had hockey in his life, having played as a young man in Canada before bringing his talent to the United States. He recently began his seventh year as head coach, general manager of the Peoria Rivermen Hockey Club, a member of the Southern Professional Hockey League. And whereas although he's an outstanding coach, John Gee is also known as an exceptional player, having been inducted into the Rivermen Hall of Fame for his time in Peoria. He's a three-time recipient of the SPHL Coach of the Year. He also led his team to the President's Cup Finals three times. And under his leadership, his team won four SPHL Coffee Cup Trophies, which acknowledged the team with the best overall regular season record. And whereas Coach Trudell has also achieved multiple records during his time in Peoria. In 1819, his team set 17 SPL, SPHL records, and in 2019 and 20, Coach Trudell broke another 38-year franchise record, leading the team to a 7-0 start. And whereas his success can also be credited to his team, which he has developed based on the character of the individuals. Coach Trudell recruits players and people who can be ambassadors for the Rivermen and the Peoria community. As a testament to his coaching ability, 84 of his players have been called up to play in higher levels. And whereas on November 2nd, 2019, he set the all-time 38-year franchise record for most wins as a coach by winning his 234th game over the Macon Mayhem. Now therefore, I, Jim Artis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby recognize and celebrate the career accomplishments of John Gee Trudell, the winningest coach in Peoria Rivermen history. So for those listening or watching tonight, if you haven't been to a Rivermen game lately, you should get down there. It's a, it's a great team. It's a lot of excitement. There's a big buzz about the quality and strength of the Peoria Rivermen being back. I know there's a group of us that are going to be going down to a game here in a couple of weeks, so I encourage everyone to get tickets and to go down and check it out. It's, it's great entertainment at a very reasonable price. We're going to ask Councilmember Dennis Seer, who used to play for the Rivermen, and again, he wasn't anywhere, obviously, near these guys' size, but he's, he's a professional hockey player in his own right. So Councilman Seer, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an honor for me to be part of this proclamation tonight for Coach John Gee Trudell. I'll help our mayor a little bit with his pronunciation. A little bit of locker room talk. Everybody knows, every hockey player knows, should know about the six Ps, which stand for proper preparation prevents piss poor performance. And this coach behind me, Mr. Trudell, is a master of proper preparation, and that's why he's here tonight and be an honor as the coach of the most amount of wins in the 38-year history of the Peoria Rivermen. Now I've seen, I'm an old man now, I've seen John Gee played in his, when he was a little slimmer like me for the Rivermen. And what's really impressive when you follow hockey, and we know the career of Coach Trudell, is played all over the world, four different countries, and really helped him become the man that he is today. And one thing that most people don't know about that really brings a lot of And one thing that most people don't know about that really brings a lot of respect to him, and some of the management that the Riverman knows at, is with fame and with great success, these guys, just the coaches, just like the players, they want to go to the next level. Well, obviously, John Gee's been very, very successful. He has turned down many, many promotions to go to the next level because he wants to stay right here in Peoria, he's committed to winning and bringing the next championship right here to Peoria. This is his seventh season for this commitment. I hope this year is the year. These guys look big enough to me and in great shape, so hopefully this year's the year to bring really what John Gee, Coach John Gee Trudell has fought for and worked very hard for to bring a championship right here in Peoria. So I hope this year's the year for Coach John Gee. Congratulations.
So, I'll try to make it quick. I know you guys have an important meeting. So Mayor Artis, Dennis Sears, Councilman Dennis, councilmembers, thank you so much for this honor. And on behalf of our team, of our family, I will accept this. And you'll hear about a lot of "us" from me, a lot of "we." In hockey, it's a big thing. We understand why we're having success, and a big part of our success here in Peoria is because of the guys we have behind me. Every single day, we, a little bit like you guys, the council, we try to attack every single day with passion, with conviction, and we understand that with a team, you can achieve great things, and that's what we're trying to do this year. And especially at the end of the year, we, I love the word "city a champion," so that's what we're trying to bring to Peoria. We want to be a city a champion. We want to bring the big trophy home, and, but we won't be able to accomplish it without a great family, a great team. And I'm the luckiest man in the world. I leave home every morning, and I have Angie that's here and my five kids, my immediate family. I leave home, they're so supportive. You know, in the wintertime, there's a lot of long hours at the rink, they support me all the way. And then I get to the rink and the front office, they're back there, right there, they put everything together to make sure we have success as a team. I remember seven years ago, ownership group Bart Rogers took a chance on a little chunky Canadian, and I want to make sure this year's the year that I pay him off with a championship. But behind me, I think, is the most important thing that we have here in Peoria when it comes to the Peoria Riverman, is my players. Because without them, you know, the winning record and everything else would not be what it is. So on behalf of them, I want to accept this award, Mr. Mayor, and hopefully we can frame it. We'll put it in the locker room to make sure that, you know, these players, these present players, our past players, our future players, understand that every single achievement, personal achievement, always, you know, I don't believe in them, I believe in team achievements. So we're going to make sure it's a team thing, we're going to be proud of it, and hopefully by the end of the year, we're going to bring this great city a championship that they deserve. So thank you so much, and I'll see you guys at the hockey rink. Thanks, guys.
meeting held on November 12th, 2019, as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Grab. Any changes or adjustments to the minutes? Councilman Grab.
Mr. Chairman, I want to applaud the great work done by our town clerk and her staff during the entire year of 2019. They've only made one mistake, so I would like to amend the minutes accordingly. Under new business, there's a reference being made to the dedication of the Bradley University Convergence Center. We don't want to have it be a divergent center, so it's Convergent Center. That dedication was held for the new Convergent Center at Bradley. I could make that correction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other lights for changes or corrections, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
The first item is a public hearing, 19-365, is a public hearing regarding the citywide sewer rate adjustments.
We have a motion to open the public hearing by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Please cast your ballots to open the public hearing. That motion passes unanimously. Anyone who would like to address the city council regarding the citywide sewer rate adjustments, please step forward to the center podium. First call. Second call, anyone who would like to address the city council regarding the citywide sewer rate adjustments? And third and last call, this is the public hearing regarding the citywide sewer rate adjustments. Seeing none, we have a motion to close the public hearing by Councilperson Sears, seconded by Councilman Rigenbach. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We have several town items. The first one is 19-366. This is a request to adopt an ordinance levying and assessing taxes for the fiscal year beginning April 1, 2019, and ending March 31, 2020, for the General Fund and Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund of the Town of the City of Peoria in the amount of $602,658.
Trustee Grab.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to adopt that ordinance.
Motion to approve, seconded by trustee Kelly. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
19-367 is a request to adopt an ordinance levying and assessing taxes for the fiscal year beginning April 1, 2019, and ending March 31, 2020, for the General Assistance Fund of the Town of the City of Peoria in the amount of $1,183,672.
Trustee Grab.
Move to adopt the ordinance as outlined.
Seconded by trustee Ruckregal. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
19-368 is a request to approve the November 2019 actual expenditures and the December 2019 anticipated expenditures for the Town of the City of Peoria.
Trustee Grab.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve.
Motion to approve, seconded in council trustee Kelly. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We're at the consent agenda. 19-369 is a request to accept the dedication deeds from Melissa K. Phillips, James Dillon, and Angela Dillon for the portions of North Kickapoo Terrace. 19-370 is a request to approve the funding recommendations from the Heart of Illinois Homeless Continuum of Care for the 2019-2020 Emergency Solutions Grant. 19-371 is a request to approve the funding recommendations from the Advisory Commission on Human Resources for the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Public Service Funding in the amount of $260,000. 19-372 is a request to approve a two-year contract with Target Solutions Learning LLC for training software that would allow the fire department to schedule, track, and monitor mandated training for all fire personnel in the amount of $15,035 for 2020 and $15,474 for 2021, for a total expenditure of $30,509. 19-373 is a request to approve a change order to the 2019 storm sewer lining contract with J.C. Dillon, and to authorize the city manager to execute the change order to add to the budget in the amount of $550,000. 19-374 is a request to approve and authorize the execution of a three-year contract with Humana to administer the employee assistance program. 19-375 is a request to approve and authorize the city manager to enter into a one-year contract with HCC Life Insurance Company for stop-loss insurance services for the city's health care plan to be effective January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020. 19-376 is a request to approve the following. A is to approve a contract with Stanic Consulting for the implementation of the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Brownfield Assessment Grant, and B is to adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2019 Revised Annual Budget relating to the expenditure for this in the amount of $300,000. 19-377 is a request to approve the following. To A is to exercise a lease/purchase option with Enterprise Fleet Management, and to approve the purchase of four vehicles previously leased from Enterprise Fleet Management in the amount of $95,000, and B is to adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2019 Revised Annual Budget for the transfer of those funds in the amount of $95,000. 19-378 is a request to approve a resolution, amending resolution number 88-240 pertaining to indemnification. 19-379 is a request to approve the following. A is a resolution amending resolution 18-073A, setting fees for the Peoria Combined and Sanitary District, increasing the city's sanitary sewer lateral fee from 1.1123 to 1.1902, effective May 1, 2020, and from 1.1902 to 1.2735, effective May 1, 2021, for property owners who are directly served by city sewers. And B is a resolution amending resolution 18-073B, setting fees for the Peoria Sanitary Sewer District, increasing the city sewer rehabilitation rate from 1.1931 to 1.2766, effective May 1, 2020, from 1.2766 to 1.3660, effective May 1, 2021, for all city property owners who are directly served by the Greater Sanitary Peoria District or city sewers. 19-380 is a request to approve a state motor fuel tax resolution in the amount of $2150,000 for construction services for the 2020 Sheridan Road project from Eleanor Place to Richmond Avenue. 19-381 is a request to approve a state MFT resolution in the amount of $557,500 for construction and construction engineering services for the Allen Road resurfacing project from Walton Way to 800 feet south of Altorford Drive. 19-382 is a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending an existing special use ordinance, number 14289, as amended, in a Class IV Single Family Residential District and a Class R2 Single Family Residential District, to add a wall sign and light standard signs for the property at 114 West Forest Hill Avenue. 19-383 is a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending an existing special use ordinance, number 13115, as amended, in a Class C2 Large-Scale Commercial District for local sign regulations for properties located at 4123 North Sheridan Road, 4125 North Sheridan Road, and 900 West Lake Avenue. 19-384, there is a handout on your desk on yellow with a revised council communication and the minutes, and also a couple of letters that you will note. And this item pertains to a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class C1 General Commercial District for adult-use cannabis dispensary for property at 2301 West Glen Avenue. 19-385 also has a handout on yellow with a revised council communication that includes a resolution that changes this item to a resolution rather than an ordinance, and also planning minutes that are pertaining to this item. Those are on yellow on your desk also. And this pertains to a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to approve a resolution approving an amendment to the comprehensive plan to include the South Village Implementation Plan, featuring the MacArthur Quarter Plan, MacArthur Plan, Southern Gateway Plan, and Western Avenue Plan. 19-386, there's a yellow handout for that one also that has the minutes that pertain to this item from the Planning and Zoning Commission. So the request is to concur with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class C2 Large-Scale Commercial District for adult-use cannabis dispensary for the property located at 3125 North University. 19-387 has a handout on yellow, which is a revised council communication, and this pertains to a request to concur with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending an existing special use ordinance, number 15862, as amended, in a Class C2 Large-Scale Commercial District for a shopping center to increase the size of the freestanding and menu board signs for the properties located at 6820 and 6828 North Pear Tree Lane, and 4115 and 4123 West Partridge Way. 19-388 is an appointment by Mayor Artis to the Downtown Advisory Commission with a request to concur of Angie Walker. 19-389 is an appointment by Mayor Artis to the Peoria Civic Center Authority with a request to concur of Richard Simonis. 19-390 are appointments by Mayor Artis to the Peoria Area Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors with a request to concur of Susan Grebner, Stephen Morris, and Rex Linder. 19-391 is a reappointment by Mayor Artis to the Peoria Civic Center Authority of Mike Edelman. 19-392 is a request to receive and file the communication from the city manager, treasurer, and finance director with, that regards the month ended October 31, 2019, unaudited financial report, and that concludes your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Items to remove from consent this evening. Councilmember Ruckregal.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 19-373.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Items 19-371 and 19-385.
Councilmember Montalongo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 19-384.
Okay, thank you. Any other items to remove from consent this evening? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve the remaining items. Councilman Sears, seconded, Councilman Ruckregal, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
19-371 is the request to approve the Community Development Block Grant Public Service Funding.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This item is what comes before us every year, funding that has been appropriated out of the Community Development Block Grant Public Service Funding, and I will first... the Community Development Block Grant Public Service Funding, and I would first like to acknowledge if any of the commissioners from the Advisory Commission on Human Resources, if any of the commissioners are here, if you could stand. So they're not here, and I know Catherine Murphy, who is the grants manager, is not here today. I believe she's out of town, but I wanted to take the opportunity to thank those individuals. I don't know if the council understands what happens when these applications go out. They receive applications and a packet of information that is no joke about this thick. They put them in a box and deliver them to them, and the commissioners on this commission, they sift through each one of these applications and score each one. They take a lot of time and then spend a whole half-day in this building filtering through them. Each of the applicants come in and make a case to the commissioners why their organization should be funded, and so I just wanted to commend those that serve on this commission. I want to thank everyone who applied, but I have to say that I'm still holding out hope that organizations out there understand that there is employment-training dollars that are part of this two hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we're allocating, and we get very few employment-training requests. And so in addition to acknowledging and thanking those who participated in submitting an application, I am asking that more organizations come in with employment-training requests for dollars, and sometimes they feel like they might be too small to come in and request funding, but that's easy. Just partner with another organization that's out there. I'm sure they'd love to have you come in and do the work and receive the funding under their roof, and so with that, Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of this request.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Additional discussion on this item? Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Artis, and I just have one question for staff on this, and I did want to thank the committee for adding domestic violence, I see, is now included as the services as one of the eligible services that we provide the grants for. I don't think it was a priority the last couple of years, but I do have a question. I noticed that we're awarding two grants to Commonplace, and I know that Commonplace just merged in with Neighborhood House, so I'm just curious on how that'll work.
Okay. Yes, you are correct that Commonplace and Neighborhood House are merging into one organization, and so the grants that were awarded to Commonplace would be managed by Neighborhood House. So the same programming would be made available to the same audience, the same public. It would just be a grant that when we enter into the agreement would be with Neighborhood House.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? We have a motion and a second. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Nineteen dash three seventy-three is a request to approve change order number one to the two thousand and nineteen storm sewer lining contract with J.C. Dillon.
Yes. Councilmember Ruck Regal.
Thank you, Mayor. On this, we've got this currently listed as storm sewer lining contract. It's probably more appropriate listed as the annual drainage repair contract, and so I would move to defer this until the first meeting in January till we can make that change.
Seconded by Councilmember Sears. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously.
Item nineteen dash three eighty-four is the request for an adoption of an ordinance for a special use for the adult-use cannabis dispensary on West Glen Avenue, and this has the handout of the revised council communication and minutes.
Councilman Jensen?
Oh, I just, for the record, would like to point out that I'm abstaining from this item due to the fact that my husband's clients own the building and have an interest in the business, and I've also provided some consulting services to that same group.
Okay, so noted. Councilman Montalongo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight I will be voting to deny this special use as I don't think this is a special use in an appropriate location.
Did you want to do that in a motion or just stating your position? You're stating your position, so we'll put a motion on the floor.
I...
You want to make a motion to deny?
Yes, I'm making a motion to deny.
Okay. Is there a second? Councilman Euler, discussion on this item?
I'd like to, seeing the lights, I would like to remind the council that this is not a vote about whether or not we should allow adult-use cannabis sales in the City of Peoria. That ship sailed last month. This is a zoning issue. Should we approve a special use in a C-one commercial area in this location as an adult-use cannabis dispensary? That's the item before us. Our Planning and Zoning Commission had a hearing, came back to us with a recommendation, unanimous recommendation, seven to nothing, to approve this. Our staff recommended it, that we approved it. I don't know about other council members. I got no communication on this either way. I would note that I spoke personally to Virginia White, who most of the council members know as the president of the Rolling Acres Neighborhood Association today. She was supportive of this, and I also spoke to Dan Corey, who is one of the owners of the Lariat Club, which is right across the street, and the Lariat Club has been in that location for, it'll be fifty years next year, and they were also encouraged to see something much better than another vacant building in their neighborhood. So with all due respect to the council member, I think that between the public hearings, the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, the staff recommendation, the endorsement from the Rolling Acres Neighborhood Association, as well as Mr. Corey at the Lariat Club, I would encourage everyone to vote no on this recommendation and vote yes. If the motion fails, vote yes on the subsequent motion to approve. Councilman Montalongo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to add that we also had public hearings and a lot of discussion around the horseshoe about this adult use and how it was going to change Peoria, and with that, we adopted an ordinance that without a vote from the city council, it's acceptable inside the warehouse district as well as industrial, and yes, there was the chance for a special I've also heard from the Westwood Neighborhood Association, Mr. Chairman, if we could, and I know there's members here from the neighborhoods surrounding the area there, if we could open up the floor, Mr. Chairman, to hear from a few other people that are here tonight.
I'm seeing no objections from the council. If anyone who would like to speak to the issue, feel free to step forward. Just need your name for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Angela Bertuzzi. I live at nineteen-eleven West Bellar Avenue. I'm currently the president of the Westwood Neighborhood Association. Our last meeting, our members' meeting, we had a discussion that this was a possibility that this dispensary would be located near our neighborhood, and most of our neighbors and members have the following opinions, that it is too close to family neighborhoods, less than a tenth of a mile away from our northern boundary, which is Glen Avenue. It's located very close to Concordia Lutheran Grade School, Rolling Acres Grade School, the Christian Center, and the Teen Center. It's located very close to Northwoods Mall, and we've had security issues in our neighborhood with the Northwoods Mall area pouring over into our neighborhood, and feel that this location of a dispensary could also add to that concern. The separate issue that we have is the traffic issue on Glen with that whole big intersection of Sterling Glen and War Memorial, just with the predicted traffic backups that this is going to cause. Some of our individual members have concerns just with this type of business being located in our neighborhood and feel that cannabis is a gateway drug, and with these schools in very close proximity, myself being a thirty-four-year teacher, we stand up there every day telling kids not to do drugs and what harm it's going to do to them, and then here our city is going to place something like this three blocks away from Concordia Grade School. We also feel that there probably will be more opportunity for theft with this, what I understand is to be a cash-only business, and again, when these things occur, our neighborhood, which is made up of several dead-end streets, serve as a very quick getaway for people on foot because police cars cannot get to them as they cut through our neighborhoods with all the dead-end streets that we have. Another question would be, since this is a brand-new thing happening in our state of Illinois and in our city, maybe put the brakes on a little bit and slow down and just approve the existing location that's already a dispensary on University with the Trinity Company? You know, how do we know that Peoria can really substantiate two of these businesses? Thank you.
Last statement, Woodview. I agree, there is way too much traffic in the area anyway. The street surrounding this building is very poor. Even a one-way street would be very crowded on Glen. If you watch on Glen between five and six P.M., it's backed up all the way almost to the prompt care entrance. It's terrible. I was robbed from the foot traffic in my garage that was only open for fifteen minutes on Saturday. A foot-traffic person stole my car. They had stolen a car twenty minutes before on Ronald, I believe, close to Northmore. From their garage, their car was stolen. This is abhorrent. We don't need other foot-traffic in the area, nor do we need other traffic. I wasn't able to come to the hearing because I work in health care, was not able to get away.
My name is Mark Roll. I'm attorney here in town in the Hall of Trades, and I represent Trinity, the advocate, and I just, I feel it's important for councilmembers that weren't able to attend the zoning commission here where this issue was brought up. This facility, you can quarrel about the state of Illinois adopting this program, but the one thing they did right was the security requirements, and so, you know, I can assure you, with the existing Trinity facility on University, they have over thirty cameras. They're going to be adding one or more for approximately three thousand square foot side. It gives you an idea of the level of security. At the Glen side, we're going to have access to four cameras. They're going to be covering literally every square foot inside the premises and every square foot of parking lot and sprawling areas. So this facility will be finding out the most secure business in the area. So any concerns about crime or, you know, this is a gateway drug, all of those concerns were addressed by the state's legislature, and the regulations that are imposed on these operators are very strict, the cameras, the ties, and the tape, please. So I don't think there are any security concerns. I just wanted to make sure the council will weigh in on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the council? I'm seeing none. Is there any further discussion on this item? Okay, so the motion on the floor is to deny. Please cast your ballots. The motion fails with three votes yes, seven votes no, and one abstention. Voting yes were councilmembers Kelly Montalongo and Euler. So we would entertain a motion. Councilman Ruck Regal?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal, or that was Ruck Regal Regenbach. Discussion on this item? Councilman Grab?
No, sir.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve. Councilman Montalongo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the councilpeople who haven't visited that location, you should be having a chance to think about this before you vote. The closest house is less than seventy-five feet from that location. I would just ask you, how would you be voting if this was going to be that close to your house? I know we were trying to keep this as far away from the neighborhoods, and that is right inside the neighborhood. There's a more appropriate location for that. They found one place, and that was it. That was all the shopping they did for it. So I want you to consider that when you make your vote.
Okay. Is there further discussion on this item? We have a motion and a second. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes with seven ayes, three nos, and one abstention. Voting yes, Mayor Artis, councilmembers Ali Sears, Grab Moore, Regenbach, and Ruck Regal. Before we go on, Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd make a motion to remove one of the items from the consent agenda that we already voted on due to my conflict, so I can abstain from that item.
So, Madam Clerk, would you like us to do a reconsideration and then vote on it?
Which item is it?
Three-eighty-six.
Okay. Yes.
Okay. So we'll, the motion is to reconsider nineteen-three-eighty-six. Motion by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Councilmember Ali. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, did you want to read that item for us, please?
Nineteen dash three-eighty-six is a request to concur with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class C-two district for adult-use cannabis dispensary at thirty-one-twenty-five North University Street.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen?
Oh, I just, for the record, I will be abstaining from this item due to a conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on this item? A motion to approve by Councilman Grab, seconded by Councilman Regenbach. Is there discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously with one abstention. Councilmember Jensen, Madam Clerk.
Okay, then we would be at nineteen-three-eighty-five, which is just before that one. There's a handout of a resolution, switching this item from an ordinance to a resolution. There's revised council communication and also minutes, and this is to adopt the amendment to the comprehensive plan to include South Village Implementation Plan featuring MacArthur Quarter Plan, the MacArthur Plan, Southern Gateway Plan, and Western Avenue Plan.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to, we're talking, yeah, Mr. Moore is at home watching, most likely. What we have before us today is a resolution. If you recall, at the last council meeting, we had an extensive overview of the South Village Tiff. You saw the video, you had the documents in front of you, and so today we are officially requesting to add this to the city plan, comprehensive plan. I want to thank Kimberly, I think Kim Smith may... I want to thank Kimberly, I think Kim Smith may still be here, there she is, who has worked on this implementation plan. What I'd like to point out about this plan, this is something that has huge community support. And because a lot of these people who were contributors to this report, oftentimes they don't hear their names called. So I want to take the liberty to thank these people in public so that they know that their contributions were instrumental to bringing this together. Tommy Arbuckle, Jonathan Romaine, Martha Ross, Larry Ivory of the Illinois Black Chamber, Derek Booth of Peoria Public Schools, Lorraine Bryson of the Tri-County Urban League, Pam Adams, Reverend Marvin Hightower of the NAACP, Mr. McFarlane Bragg from PCCO, Robin Berry, Fred Stewart of List, Jessica Wetskel of List, Bo Sutherland, Michael Freylinger, Crissetti, Lisa Fuller, and A.J. Guyton. These were some of the folks that were visited and gave their opinion about what should be in this plan. I want to thank IDG Architects and the students of Prairie View A&amp;M and HBCU that came out and stayed with us throughout the summer to provide assistance in this. Aaron Gunn, they're business managers here. Aaron, if you could wave, thank you. What this plan is providing is something that many in the community have said that they have longed for for some time. Just some of the highlights of this plan, in one of the media outlets, the picture that's on the front of this plan is of the community air market. And when you hear "community air market," you hear grocery store. You hear a grocery store that also provides prepared foods. There's a workforce training center as part of this plan, South Village Plaza, a health and wellness center. Naturally, with the MacArthur Bridge completed, mural on MacArthur Street Bridge, and to install an "I love South Village" sign, and some other things that are a part of this plan. What we are trying to do here is make it attractive for individuals, businesses, municipalities, entrepreneurs to see that the city is behind this area on the south side of Peoria, up and down MacArthur Street. We're looking at bringing through part of the plan represented, what could be visualized on Western. As you all know, that next year, we're starting an $11 million to $12 million complete streets renovation of Western Avenue from Adams Street all the way up to up the hill. Also, it extends even all the way down to the Southern Gateway. And one of the things I asked them to look at, the architects look at on the Southern Gateway, was revision, re-envisioning a grocery store where the Adams Street Market used to be. And I didn't live here when that market was open, but from what I hear, it was a market that was sorely needed in the community and definitely still needed because the entirety of the first district, the entirety of the first district, from Bartonville all the way up to War Memorial on the north side, the entirety of the first district is a food desert. Not just the south side, not just the warehouse district, the entirety of the district. I don't think any other district can say that their entire district, and I could be wrong, but I don't think so, the entire district is a food desert. And so what this is not, what this is not, is the city of Peoria saying, "We're going to do this." Yep, right here, this is what we're going to do. That's not what this is. What this is, is an opportunity to let the state and federal government know, the state and federal government, and when you hear that, you hear grants, where they give you money to do stuff. We're saying to the state and federal government, "We have a plan. We are shovel-ready. So if you gave us money, we are shovel-ready to do some of these things as a city. We are prepared to offer incentives to some private investors who would come in and build on these properties." If you're looking, if you were paying attention to the news today, you saw that the Armory, a private investor is coming in and is going to take over the Armory in the North Valley. That's private money. If you've been watching, you know that next week, we're going to hear the Ronald McDonald House is opening. Beautiful facility. That's private money. If you're paying attention, you saw that the Scottish Rite Temple is re-envisioning what can happen there. That's private money. You heard a private individual opened up the Mercado on the North Valley. That's private money. The Peoria Women's Club received a donation to bring back that building. That's private money. Now, all that said has been private money, and none of that is happening on the south side. No one is bringing private money to the south side. So this plan allows us to say to the state and federal government, "We need help down here," because the private money is not coming. So if someone comes to me and say, "Hey, we want to do something on the North Valley because we need to incentivize," I stop right there, and I will list the things that I've just listed and say, "The private money is there. We don't need it on the North Valley. The North Valley is surviving because private money is coming." Is the North Valley perfect? Of course not. It's not perfect. There's a lot of things that can still be done there. And I'm thanking Habitat for Humanity for being a part of that. It's not perfect by any stretch of the imagination. There's a lot that the North Valley needs. The North Valley needs a grocery store. The North Valley needs better housing. But the south side has none of the attributes that I just listed under private investment. And so what you're being asked to approve today is an implementation plan with a timeline that will help us not only incentivize private individuals to bring in private money, but it will say to the state and federal governments, "This is what our shovel-ready plan would be if you would be so kind as to provide us funding from the tax dollars that we send to the federal government and that we send to the state and send it back to us so we can help our citizens to revitalize an area that we all know has been sorely disinvested." We all know the south side has not received the level of attention that it should have been receiving all of these years. And to that end, you may remember last month that I requested, and thankfully you all approved, a million dollars out of the South Village Tiff specifically to go toward funding this type of activity. I've asked at the Planning and Zoning Meeting that we also find a way to match that million dollars with a million dollars from either home funds and/or CDBG funds. Because in the number of years that that has not happened on the south side, I think the time has come for us to be serious about what's happening on the south side. What that would do, if it were to occur, and you're not voting on that tonight, but what that would do, if that were to occur, is to allow some incentives to continue to bring in housing that is very much needed. You have seen the NRN report, you've seen the housing report that came out of the National League of Cities. You understand that this is not some pie in the sky, some wish that if it didn't happen, it wouldn't make a difference. It will make a difference. And so having said that, you having seen the presentation last month, the presentation is online, so anybody watching or listening or online can go onto the City of Peoria website and see exactly what each one of us saw last month. It looks like this. South Village Revitalization, MacArthur Quarter Comprehensive Plan, South Village Tiff Implementation Plan. I will tell you already that there is one individual who contacted Kim and is interested in doing something under the arts and culture that's in this plan, a private individual. I can tell you already that I'm already in conversation with a major medical facility that is looking at the health and wellness piece of this plan. That happened because we took the time to bring in an organization to do this plan for us. And so for that, I thank you. And I want to, while I have the floor, I can not say enough, Mr. City Manager, about Kimberly Smith. She has been outstanding. She has been patient. She has taken the time to do what we need to be doing as a city in trying to understand what is needed and necessary and what the participants want out of it. She was all over every part of the community, the East Bluff, the North Valley, the south side. For a period of time, she was married to this project and not to her family. And for that, I thank her, and I cannot thank her enough. She does more for me with this project in the south side than I've seen anyone do in a lot of years, and I can't say enough, as you can tell, Kim. So I really do appreciate you. With that, I'd like to move for approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by Dr. Ali. Further discussion, Dr. Ali?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Artis. I also enthusiastically support this plan. I've been to at least one of the community meetings, and, I mean, the turnout was tremendous. The excitement level was extremely high. The concept of the MacArthur Quarter Plan brought a lot of hope to community leaders, to community residents of the south side. I also commend the city staff and all those residents and community leaders who played a part in providing input into this plan. And I think it has potential to attract private investment. I think it positions the city for growth on the south side in terms of bringing individuals back to the south side. We've lost a lot of population over the past, really, 40 years, going from, in, I think, the 1950s, there were 33,000 people living on the south side. 1970s, it was down to, oh, 20? I did have those numbers. From 33,000 down to, I think, 20,000. And now it's less than 14,000 people that live on the south side. So that's tremendous loss of population. But I think this is an opportunity to grow population, to grow businesses, to grow organizations, and to increase hope in making a difference in an important part of our city. So I'm proud to second and support this plan.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this item? I'm seeing none. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We have a presentation. 19-393 is a presentation on the city's workforce composition and diversity goals.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the request of Councilwoman Moore at the last meeting, she had requested that we provide a presentation to you on the city's workforce composition and our diversity goals. Our human resources director is under the weather. She's been out of the office for the last couple of days, so I will be presenting the information for you this evening. The first slide, if I, we could jump over to the... The first slide that we have just simply shows, as of the 2010 census, what the population and what the demographics of the city of Peoria look like. Our white population was 57.5 percent, our black population 26.5 percent, Hispanic population 5.6, Asian population 5.5, and then two or more races at 4.2 percent. So about 42 percent of the city's racial demographic is minority. So over the years, as I think we had different discussions about the, and Councilwoman Moore just referenced the NRN study, talked about that, where we raised awareness of some of the challenges that we had in the city of Peoria about not only some of the economic disparities we have, but also those racial inequities that we have inside the city. So with that, I think that it's become clear that from at least this administration, we have tried to at least reflect and set a goal of saying that we want to have a workforce that reflects the city of Peoria. So having said that, what I want to now do is jump into some data. And this is, as I think everyone saw in the packet, there's some data here that's pretty data-intensive. But what I want to do is talk about using two reports, really as a snapshot. We have some graphs of what it looks like in between then, but from 2009 to 2019. And we'll see what happens with our workforce during that period of time. We've had some major challenges in that period as well. We're using the snapshot out of the EEO4 report. This is the information that we send to the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. It's federal reporting that we have to submit every year by the end of June. So it's a point-in-time look at what the composition of our workforce looks like. So in 2009, the EEO4 data for male employees is listed above. You see that we had 504 white employees, we had 94 black employees, we had 10 Hispanic employees, and seven Asian employees. That, all total, there's about 615 male employees. There were 111 minorities, 94 black, 10 Hispanic, and 7 Asian. So the racial composition of our male workforce in 2009 was 18 percent minority. Moving on, our female workforce in 2009 was 197 female employees, which is about 24 percent of the total. There, we're looking at, we had 61 minorities, so roughly about 31 percent of our female workforce in 2009 was a minority. During the next 10 years, we've had a lot of contraction in our workforce. There have been programs that we've eliminated, that we are no longer responsible for. Animal control was transferred to the county. In 2011, we had a series of layoffs. We offered an early retirement incentive. And then periodically, from 2012 to 2018, we had layoffs as well. The Workforce Development Department was transferred to ICC, and then eventually now has been kind of reimagined as its own standalone entity. There was two additional voluntary separation initiatives that we offered in 2017 and 2018. And in some cases, we weren't backfilling positions. So the city's workforce reduced in that period of time. From 2009 to 2019, we went from 812 employees to 631. So that's a 22 percent reduction in headcount during that 10-year period of time. So now let's look at the 2019 data. In 2019, we have 501 male employees, 91 of which are minorities. That's about 18 percent. So we're still at that 18 percent level for male employees. The reduction on female employees, we're down to 130 female employees that work for the city as full-time employees. And again, this is the snapshot as of June 30th that we're looking at. And 38 of those females were minorities, so that's roughly about 29 percent. But our female workforce in whole has shrunk from 24 percent down to 20 percent as well. And then this is just a reflection of the trends. If you wanted to look, I didn't want to have to sit here and walk through every two years the report, but this shows you what the workforce composition looked like for our white employees and minority employees. And you can see the trend lines have, excuse me, the trend lines dropped pretty significantly from 2009 to 2013, and then somewhat leveled off for minority employees. And then we've seen a drop from 2017 to 18 with the number of white employees that we have for the city. So overall, we have, in the EEO4 report, they have categories of employees. This doesn't directly correspond to how we've talked about positions when we sit around and talk about the budget, about non-union employees and management employees versus members of different bargaining units. So they look at the job categories. So you're looking at the different types of job functions. So the first category would be the officials or administrators. So these are people that have higher-level, upper-level decision-making authority. And you can see that in 2009, we had 43 white officials and administrators and three minorities. As of 2019, we have 20 white and two minority employees as officials and administrators. In the professional ranks, we had 89 white employees in the professional ranks and 30 minority employees in the professional ranks. We're now down to 20 and to four. And again, I have to caveat this, as I mentioned before about taking the snapshot in time, we've had different people that are providing these reports, and they may have made different determinations about who is a professional employee from 2009 to 2010. determinations about who is a professional employee from 2009 to 2019. It's not really drawing an apples-to-apples comparison, because you have to make that determination as you look at your workforce and you look at the employees and the positions that they're sitting in. Technician employees, white employees went from eighty-nine to eighty, minority employees went from forty-one to twenty-nine. Protective services, you can see we have two hundred and fifty-four white employees and forty-one minorities in 2009, three hundred and nineteen and sixty-five in 2019. And this is where, one of the areas where we may have seen some of the professionals. In prior years, I think, as you moved into the lieutenant's ranks and in the captain's ranks, they may have been classified differently, captain being fire captains, they may have been classified differently in older reports. But you can see that we're making some progress as we've had the efforts to try and recruit more minorities into the protective services. We can see that there's been some positive movement there. Administrative support, here again, and this is one of the areas where we've seen a significant reduction in workforce. We had eighty-six administrative support, white administrative support employees in 2009, thirty-three minorities. Those are down to seventeen and fourteen, respectively. And then on the skilled crafts and trades, we had seventy-nine white employees and twenty-four minorities in 2009, and we're down to forty-six and fourteen, respectively, full-time employees in 2019. So if we look at this as the overall composition of where those employees are, the largest segment of our minority population in, or the largest segment of our employee population by job class in 2009 was in protective services. That's the same today. We do see that we have, from a skilled crafts and trades, we're down to about nine percent of our total workforce. So those are just the overall numbers on the white employee side. On the minority side, we're seeing that the two largest areas in 2009 were in our technicians and protective services. And again, we're seeing that the largest composition of our minority workforce are technicians and protective services in 2019. So looking at 2009 to 19 and what our racial demographics look like and the job categories by minority employees, you can see that in 2009, we had twenty-one percent of our workforce was minority. Today, it's twenty percent. And as we were talking through this, because now we're going to, I'm going to kind of get out of the data and kind of get into what we have been doing. Dr. Mohammed mentioned something during our meetings, our staff meetings, as we were putting this information together, that said, "Over ten years, if we really haven't seen a noticeable difference," even though I'm going to identify and highlight what we've been working on, maybe we need to start thinking about what we can do differently. And I think that's something that we'll look towards in 2020, about some of those things that we'll be doing differently. So what we have been doing, and these have really been some of our longstanding recruitment strategies, is we have been recruiting with minority groups and publications. We do use radio and newspaper and TV advertisements. We have sent our vacancy announcements out to barber shops and African-American churches. We've utilized and had our Explorer program, which is really kind of, I would really call it the minor minor leagues, because it's high-school-age kids that are interested in both the police or the fire. So we've had those kind of Explorer programs in place. We used to have appearances on local television stations, and I think Deborah Bush is here, and she would say that she used to go on TV and talk about some of the openings that we had for some of our positions. And then we obviously use the Internet to advertise for specific positions. So then we zeroed in on some other different strategies. We started working in 2012 to have more diverse representation on our hiring panels. We started to look at advertising in movie theaters. That didn't meet with much success as we moved through that process. We started utilizing billboards. Notably, we've utilized billboards for police officer recruitment. We've done significantly more advertising on social media, and will continue to do so. We've done some advertising with banners and out on the street. We've done advertisements on buses. We've used banners at the malls. We did some advertising beginning in 2014 at Soul Fest. And then obviously, as well, we've been trying to go to wherever we can find a minority recruitment job fair, we're trying to go to those and have a presence at those. And that really started in 2015. Beginning in 2016, we started, Peoria Public Schools really started to push for the dual credit EMT and fire science programs, and that really helped to try and encourage that dual credit so that we could see that the high school students would gain some college credit by going to that, so hopefully that it would help to accelerate them into the fire service. We started to do interview training for our panels. We had the cadet program that we started that was directly out of the recommendations that came from the NAACP and the Committee on Police and Fire Recruitment. We created Peoria Corps, where we've been now, and we're moving into, I believe, our fourth cohort of young adults that are going through that program, learning the skills of green infrastructure maintenance, so that as we start to roll out the C S O efforts that will see something, some positive, hopefully some positive job results for that, for those people that have participated in Peoria Corps. It's an AmeriCorps program, so they get some credit for that, for future education as well. Juneteenth, we had a presence at the Juneteenth celebration that was held on MacArthur Avenue at the park just south of Fire Station Eight this past year. And we've, as well, expanded our recruitment to the Quad Cities. And so that's been something that we've been looking to do. As we look forward, you know, we are trying to do a couple of other things. We're working on updating our affirmative action plan. I will say that we haven't had an updated affirmative action plan since 2010. We did not update it in 2014, so that needs to be updated. And so we'll have that back in front of council, hopefully in February, for you to look at and for your consideration. You approved, as part of your budget adoption last month, an additional thirty thousand dollars for us to recruit at historically black colleges and universities. That is something that we will be pursuing this year. We're really focused on the protective services, on police and fire, but if there's other opportunities, we're certainly going to make anyone at those HBCUs aware of what openings we have. At the Fair Employment Commission, they've had some conversations about wanting to help us to participate. The ordinance does allow them to participate in interview panels. So beginning in the first quarter of this year, we're going to provide them with some interview training and encourage them to help us to sit on some of our interview panels as well. And then lastly, in the, as we roll out the affirmative action plan, one of the other key parts that we're going to be working on is resurveying our employees to determine how they identify themselves. If you noticed, I didn't talk about two or more races as a category, even though when we talked about racial demographics, that's one area we haven't really, we don't really have good record-keeping on. So we're going to resend out that information to see if we can ask our employees to tell us how they identify by both race and gender, so that we can have that information. And that will help us to feed into the affirmative action plan as we roll that out. So those are some of the specific mileposts we're going to be doing. You know, obviously, the interview training in the first quarter, the resurveying, the employees will be done probably mid-January. We should have that complete. And then we'll be back to you with the affirmative action plan in February, rolling that out with additional recommendations that will come out of the analysis that we'll do, not only in our workforce, but who's here inside our region that we would be trying to encourage to come to work for the city as well. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you for the report, Mr. Manager. Questions, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for bringing this report back to us. I think it's very important. It is born out of a lot of questions that have come from internal staff, those who are currently employed at the city of Peoria, and those who have departed the city of Peoria. And they're concerned that the city is not being as proactive as it could be to bring that racial of minority employees in line with what the city residents are. So I do have a couple of questions. You mentioned earlier something to the effect of the classifications of professionals, and that sometimes that has changed. Am I to understand that there is no objective determination of what is a professional and what is a paraprofessional, and that it can change? And my concern with that is that if it can change based upon subjective measures, then we can, these numbers will change depending on how we want them to look?
No. There's an objective standard. The only difference is the person that's making that determination. And so in prior years, it was a different EEO manager. Currently, it is Dr. Mohammed that made the determination, looking at the job classifications and what the EEO reports stated. So that's the only difference, and that's one of the things that we'll look at. And just, one of the things that we discussed is, as we roll out the affirmative action plan, we're going to revisit those to make sure that that's correct. And part of it may be, like I said, it's the way we may be reporting the protective services in years past. I think that we reflected that, as you moved into upper-level management, sergeants, for example, were considered professional positions, and then eventual, or were considered technician positions, and then lieutenants were considered professional positions, just by the nature of their responsibilities that they have. So we're going to revisit that, and that's one of the points that we'll come back to you and report on more fully as we update the affirmative action plan.
Okay. And then I understand that we have, in the last few years, as you indicated, as a result of the NAACP's work, we've been very proactive in trying to recruit, at least, more diverse protective services. But that has not necessarily occurred, as far as I know, with city staff. And so what is the plan to be as proactive with city staff recruitment for minorities as we have been or trying to be with the police and fire?
As we've discussed in our strategic planning process, as we've discussed in the meetings that we've had with the police and fire, we are going to continue to be aggressive in trying to, as I stated earlier, we have a goal of trying to hire a workforce that reflects this community. We are going to continue to make efforts across the city to hire a more diverse workforce. That is something that we'll be setting as a goal. I've talked in years past with all the department directors about that, saying that diversity is important, we need to be hiring a diverse workforce. This is one of your goals for the year, is to make sure as you go into that hiring process. There may be departments that don't have openings in that given year, so they may not have any ability to affect that. But that's what we'll continue to do.
In those, when we're talking about the protective services numbers here, if we were to pull police and fire out of these numbers, would the diversity numbers change? Percentages change? Because we're already working for police and fire, we already know we're trying to be proactive there. Would that...
Yes, they would. The diversity numbers would go up, because it's the largest group of employees that we have. And if you take those employees out, our diversity numbers would go up.
Okay. Okay. When you're talking about surveying the, our staff to determine how they classify themselves, that's not something we can get off their applications? Because it seems like we already have that information.
We can, but we can also, we can also resurvey them. It certainly, there may be people that identify in a number of different ways, and we want to just make sure that we're checking that out, and it's a good time for us to do it as we look at rolling out the new affirmative action plan.
Do we provide, on a yearly basis, or every two years, or every three years, or just some regular basis, an opportunities for our employees to have an employee opinion survey about how we are doing?
We haven't, we haven't had one in a couple of years, but I want, I'm trying to recall when we had our last employee opinion survey. It was several years ago. I want to say 2016.
It might be true of us, not every year, because that would be quite cumbersome. But I think every two, at least three years at the most, we, I would recommend and hope that the council would agree that we need to have some type of an employee opinion survey, because if we're not asking our own people how we're doing, we may be missing the boat in a lot of ways. And then, my next question would be related to the skilled craft service workers. Are those seasonal workers that are included in these numbers?
No, this is just full-time, not the seasonal.
Part-time, but not seasonal? Okay. Well, I want to thank you for taking the time to bring these back. I would like to recommend that when the report comes back, the affirmative action report that you've indicated we've not done in ten years comes back. I believe we had scheduled that to come back, the second meeting in February. It would be very helpful if the HR manager presents that, because you can't be everywhere. And although it is admirable, it is admirable that you fall on the sword for your people, because that's what you're supposed to do. I believe the HR director is one of the few directors that we have come before us to talk about anything other than union issues when they arise. And it would be helpful if that person would come before us every, at least once a quarter, to give us an update on how we're doing.
Sure.
Because if we don't monitor how we're doing, we'd never know if we're on the right path or not. With that, I believe those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions, Councilmember Ali?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Urick, for that report. I've been pleased to have served, probably for the last three or four years, on the Diversity Committee for Police and Fire. And I do believe that because we've had that focus on diversifying police and fire, commissioned police and fire in particular personnel, that we've seen some progress in that area. We've worked on goals, we've worked on strategies, and we've had the support of the council behind us. And, you know, that's why the cadet program came along for, initially for police and fire, but the police program has continued. But I think because we look at city staff going from twenty-one percent minority in 2009 to twenty percent minority in 2019, means that we haven't made a lot of progress, and we haven't had the focus that is required to increase that percentage. It appears that the greatest disparity in terms of race looks to be in professional employees. That's where we see the greatest difference between white and minority employees. So, you know, that's something that we have to look into a lot more closely. An affirmative action plan will give us the detail. It will look at hires, it will look at minorities and women that are in the pool to be hired for professional and other categories. And so it will give us a, kind of some root cause information. Are we not hiring more minorities in that category because we don't have as many applicants in the pool? Or is it because we're not converting the pool to hires? I mean, it gives us a lot of detailed information as to who applied for these jobs and who actually got hired. So I just wanted to briefly share some information on affirmative action plans. They are required for federal contractors with fifty or more employees and fifty thousand dollars or more in contracts. They are governed by the Office of Federal Contract Compliance Programs, OFCCP. Affirmative action plans are designed to ensure equal opportunity in all aspects of employment, and they help to identify and analyze potential problems in participation and utilization of women and minorities in the workforce. So it's really important that we develop this plan. We're out of compliance, and we're going to be brought into compliance by having this plan in February. So I'm glad, Mr. Manager, that you put a timeline on that. We're going to make it happen, and we're going to be able to look at the detail and then set some goals, because that's what the plan will have, some specific goals and specific strategies for addressing areas of underrepresentation for women and minorities in our city workforce. So thank you for that presentation, and I look forward to the plan. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
I had Councilmember Rigenbach next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very informative report here, Mr. Manager. And I have to say, as a white, middle-aged, can I still say middle-aged guy, it makes me a little uncomfortable, and I think, I think that's really good, because we can look at this in a number of ways. We've got twenty-two fewer employees than we did ten years ago, which is a huge, huge number to see cut. But the specific numbers, and obviously, this takes a little more to digest than just running through a PowerPoint now, but I think... running through a PowerPoint now, but I think there's some challenges that I appreciate this council having addressed head-on in the past. And I think we only are going to get there by bringing this up on a regular basis. So, thank you for putting these cold, hard numbers in front of us. I think that's, that's a huge part of it. Dr. Muhammad, I see Reverend Hightower from the NAACP out here, and others that have participated in the Diversity Committee on Police and Fire. I mean, that's, that's the crux of making this work, and the recruiting efforts, the specifics of an affirmative action plan with specific goals and, and action steps, I think, is something that we all need to embrace. And I just, I, I, I'm probably not really making a point here, except I just think that this is one of those things that needs to be talked about more in order for us to actually see the progress that we all say that we want. Thank you.
Thank you. I had Councilman Graves next.
Mr. Manager, between 2009 and present time, 2019, the city workforce contracted by what percent?
About 22%.
22%. And I believe you made the point that if it hadn't contracted in such a huge way, we might be in a better place right now as it relates to our diversity composition.
It, it's possible. I think that, that we did see that during that period of time, when we made those contractions on a raw percentage basis, that, that more minorities left the city workforce during that 10-year period than more white employees. So when you look at that, I think the, the white workforce, the reduction was about 20% and it was about 25% for minority employees. So, that, it's possible that that's the case. Some of that, though, when you offer voluntary separation plans, or you offer up an, an early retirement incentive, if your workforce is at a nearing retirement age, they may be more apt to take that, which is really then a reflection of what have we been doing probably in the, in the 15 or 20 years before that period of time from 2009, to say, what were we doing to, to diversify the workforce then? Because now you have a larger population of minority employees that are leaving the workforce, so that's something we need to look at, too. It, it, it really does say that we've still have a lot of work to do to get to a workforce that reflects our community.
So Peoria can't be the only city attempting to attract better minority representation in its workforce. I would suspect that may be part of our problem in keeping some of our professionals here, because they might find greener pastures elsewhere, hence the need to continue to focus. I have a question about next steps. What historically black colleges and universities are we planning on focusing on in 2020 to help enhance minority employment here in the city of Peoria?
That I, I can't give you an answer for, because I just don't know, but we'll get that report back and send that to you, so that everyone knows-
I know Peoria Public Schools has- You know, I think that, that is a very, very-
Good.
-next step. And I know it's worked for Peoria Public Schools. Thank you.
Sure, maybe Deb Bush is here, maybe she could fill us in on that? I bet she knows.
I did tell Deborah I would look back at her if I needed her assistance here on this.
Yes, so far I have contacted Harris Stowe in St. Louis. The objective we want to do is to choose schools that are within an eight-hour or less drive. So I do have a list of some school, other schools that I plan to contact. It's just hard right now because of the holiday coming up, and a lot of them are, next week they're out all the way through till the first and second week of January. But I have started contacting some to see if they would let us come, and, and most of the schools so far have been very excited about the opportunity of us coming. And this is not just for, like, a job fair. I want to go to when we're the only ones there, so we are the main, main person to deal with, so we're not having to compete with others. So I'm looking at the opportunity to go when it's just police and fire.
Okay, thanks, Deb. I had Councilmember Jensen next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. City Manager and Dr. Muhammad, for this report. You know, I've been a, this is a, a big issue for, for myself. I've been serving on the Diversity Committee as well for the Police and Fire Commission, as well as the subcommittee working with Deb on additional recruitment efforts. One thing I am concerned and disappointed, not only in our decline in minorities in the last 10 years from '21 to '20, but also the percentage of females from 24% to 20. And, and as I look through this, there's even more of a decline I notice, especially for women, in positions of either officials and administrators or professionals. It's concerning to me that we've gone from having 17 women that were either officials or administrators to four in 2019. And then we've gone from having 32 female professionals in 2009 to only 14 in 2019. So I know our focus is on increasing minorities, but also women. And I'd like us, as part of our plans that we developed, to focus on getting more women and minorities in these leadership positions. I even noticed it from when I worked here, now close to 20, I guess 25 years ago, I, we had more female and African-American department heads than we do now. So, you know, I applaud the efforts of the staff and, and this council that we've made this a priority, that we've made changes to the ordinances in the last three years with regards to our public safety, our police and firefighters with specific goals. But I think we can do a lot more, this report shows that. Bringing it forward and having more regular discussions, like quarterly reports, and actual, not just paper report backs, but having actual, either the city manager, the HR director, as well as the diversity and inclusion officer here, to give us reports on what we're doing and how successful we're being, and monitoring that, and keep pushing, because I think it's very important that we have a more diverse workforce. So thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Ali?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just, I agree with everything I heard from Councilwoman Jensen, and I just want to encourage city manager, when the affirmative action plan is put together, it's, you know, always historically been a plan for women and minorities, that's been the focus. But the new plans also include supplemental plans for veterans and individuals with disabilities. It doesn't go into as much detail for those categories, but that's something that we want to track in terms of how many veterans and individuals with disabilities do we have in our workforce, how many have applied for jobs, and how many have gotten jobs. So the plans do include that information, so I just want to make sure that we're inclusive of those groups as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm seeing no additional lights on this, so we would entertain a motion to receive and file. Councilman Ali, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We're at first readings. 19-394 is a first reading review of an ordinance amending Article 5, Section 30 of the Code of the City of Peoria relating to towing of private vehicles, duties, and requirements of tow operators on list.
Okay. Just, Chief's going to take first shot at this?
Sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. So what you have in front of you is a revision to the current tow ordinance. We'd received complaints from various tow companies about our fees not being increased since 2011, and that the tow fees that we were imposing were lower than tow fees in the surrounding area, or that we were allowing the tow companies to impose, I should say. You have a list of the comparables that the auto theft investigator had gathered of 16 other departments around the central Illinois area. We made corrections to the tow fees, and upon doing so, we also made revisions to the ordinance to be consistent with Illinois law and for clarification purposes. In addition, we've inserted a $250 annual fee to compensate for the work that is done by the auto theft investigator. This fee is meant to compensate the city for the hours the auto theft investigator spends on his inspections, and it is not meant to be a moneymaker for the time, it's just meant to compensate his work hours. Attached, you'll have a redlined version as well as a clean version of the ordinance.
Okay. Questions for the chief or other discussion? Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I've been contacted by Mr. Stanton of Mr. Tow Ed and Mr. Pedago of Joe's Towing. I'd like to provide privilege of the floor for them to give commentary during this first reading.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no objection from the council, those members would like to come forward and address the council, Mr. Pedago and Mr. Stanton? Welcome.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to thank you for the time to speak tonight. My name's Don Stanton, I own Mr. Tow Ed's wrecker service. I've been towing for the city of Peoria, the Peoria Police Department, for 31 years. In 31 years, the city's only granted us two raises. When I did reach out and I started working with the police department, trying to come up with some fees, I've reached out to some city council members, I've been working on this for three years, and to finally get to this point, we're hit with a $250 fee. So I asked for a raise to get us up to par with the other police departments, and the first thing I get from the city is, we're going to give you a raise, but we're going to charge you $250 fee. There's no other city slash police department within 100, 150 miles of Peoria that does this. So I reached out to some folks and told them that I would help with this new ordinance, so we didn't have to keep going back and forth with verbiage, wordage. This revised ordinance isn't what was proposed. Now we have to go back and do this several times. There's a lot of verbiage in here that's not right. We're, I'm in the towing business, I know the towing laws. So now we got to go back and do all this again. When I offered my help, and I was told if we needed your help, we'll call you. Nobody ever called me. I reached out, I left messages, nobody returned my phone calls. So the biggest problem with the $250 fee is the city of Peoria, or the city of Peoria is a leader, I, I feel, compared to the most of the communities in our area. If the city allows this $250 application fee, every police department my company tows for is going to be on board and hit me with another $250 fee. Just so you guys understand, I tow for 12 police departments. If the city imposes this, it's going to cost me $3,000 extra dollars a year, so the city can make $2,500. We have 10 companies on our list now. I want everybody to think about that. I also want everybody to think about, in your job, how would you feel if you only received two raises in 31 years? That's a big deal. In 2012, I bought my first brand-new flatbed. It was $68,000. I just bought three brand-new trucks last year, the same exact make, model. That truck now is $105,000. We're asking for a $50 or $55 rate increase. Peoria's been the lowest for rotation tow in the area for quite some time. We're already getting $150 for tows for Tazewell County, state police, East Peoria's $125. The biggest problem I have with the revised ordinance is, I reached out to other police chiefs, I've reached out to other sheriffs personally, and told them, hey, we're making headway on this, here's the ordinance that we came up with. If I turn around and take the new revised ordinance to them, I'm just costing myself $3,000. Why would I want to do that? Why would these guys want to be on the list to pay? I want everybody to understand, I think everybody's got a misconception of the tow guys. I think everybody thinks we're just multimillionaires, we're towing these cars, we're getting impound fees, we're paying storage. What you don't understand is, we get stuck with probably 50% of the cars we don't get paid for that we tow for the Peoria Police Department. Right now I have 47 cars in my inventory that are Peoria police calls. I got four of them that's getting picked up. That's, now I already pay my guys, I already pay my insurance on every tow they do, whether it's picked up or not, that's how my guys get paid. What you also need to understand, too, is, we already technically really pay to be on your list. And my reasoning for that is, all the abandoned vehicles we pick up, the boats, the campers, they cost me to get rid of them. Last year, or this year, I spent $1,800 in fees at the landfill. I never got paid on those tows. My guys got paid for those tows. I have five more boats in inventory now that I can't even afford to get rid of, $375 bucks apiece. I got a camper with 200 tires in it that I was told I had to tow. Those tires are going to cost me $2 apiece to get rid of. That's $600 to dispose of that camper to be on the city Peoria Police Department's list. We're already paying you guys, we're already, we're already paying to be on the list. So I want everybody to think about that. And I understand the $250, it isn't a big deal. I'll pay the $250 bucks. The problem is the repercussions from the other cities around us. So I'd like to thank, thank you for your time, and have a good night.
Thank you.
My name is Bruce Pedago. I'm the owner of Joe's Towing here at 2915 Southwest Washington Street in Peoria. I currently also am the sitting president for the State Association. I am also a legislative chairman on the National Towing Association. My father started our company, I've been in the towing business my entire life. When I first was notified that we were finally going to make some headway on a raise, I was very excited, because as Donnie stated, we, the city of Peoria's been behind the times on the rates. Reading through your first reading, there's a lot of clerical issues that need to be cleared up, there's some issues that will not work. And first and foremost is under your Section 30-298, in the new red ink in the copy that I have, it states, "For all police department ordered tows, each tow company must send certified notification to the lien holder and the vehicle owner. And they must do this within 48 hours of the tow. Failure to send proper notification will result in forfeiture of any storage fees until proper notification is received by the lien holder and the vehicle owner." The state Illinois just passed in the last two years a law for the lien holder. The state Illinois also makes a database available for the towing companies to access. The state law under Chapter State Statute 625, 5-4, dash 201, and the following, lays out the state guidelines. I would recommend if we're going to adopt this language, we adopt what's already on the state books, because that's already what we have to comply with. In that statute, when you start talking about owner notification, you can check with your legal representation, the state statute, they allowed us to determine that notification was when we sent the registered letters, not when they were received. That is a big distinction, it was something that we had to work with our lobbyists to get passed. So I'm asking that in the next reading, or as we move forward, that we would adopt the state statute, that would take out the number-one consideration I have. There's other clerical issues. Under the fees charged- Under the fees charged, it states, under section E, "All towing companies must accept following forms of payment, credit, debit, or cash." In the original that I seen that was submitted that we were going to be working with, it stated that we would be allowed to charge a convenience fee for the use of credit cards. The state law allows us to do that, I would ask that we adopt that also in this new resolution that you've got here in front of you. Moving forward, I also reached out, my staff reached out to the city manager's office and asked to be involved in this process because I thought it was somewhat beneficial to the city that they would maybe ask some of the professionals that they have in the city, that work in the city, that bring in a vast knowledge of the towing business. I believe Donnie, like myself, has been in his business basically his whole life, as I have. And I wasn't ever, I was pretty much told the same thing Donnie was, "If we need you, we'll call you." Well, now I'm standing in front of you saying, "Hey, we could have had all this worked out before it come before you," with something that is not workable. I would ask that if moving forward, maybe we could be involved in it. There's a couple of other small items that needs to be looked at. Subsection I that states that, "Tow vehicle shall be taken to location designated by the vehicle owner, driver, agent, should such person not wish to store the vehicle at the tow operator's facility. However, all vehicles towed upon the direction of the police department shall be towed to the location designated by the police officer in charge at scene." We need to add the language that states, "Upon payment of services." Otherwise, we're directed to tow it somewhere with no guarantee of payment. That is a small clerical. With that, I would hope that as we move forward, maybe we can be involved in the process so that we can get it right, being as it does take, it seems, a long time for a city that sets rates by a legislative, by ordinance to raise them. I'd like to get it right the first time and not have to come back and revisit it several times. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, I'm assuming it's safe to say that we would be able to contact these folks, anyone else who's professionals to help us before we bring it back for final?
Yes, we will.
Thank you. I had Councilman Grab next.
I appreciate the input of the tow operators. They perform a very essential and important function in our city, and I wouldn't want their job. Manager, I appreciate consultation you're going to do with them. I do need clarification from our superintendent of police. The red line area means what again? These are where we're going to have changes?
Yes, those are the changes that will be adopted in the ordinance.
Wow, so there's just been the need to do a lot of revisions here. I'm glad Detective Terry has flagged these areas and making some of these changes, and I hope we move forward and bring forth a much better situation for our tow operators in 2020. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. I had Councilmember Montalongo next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. City Manager, is it typical for us to be charging a fee to do business with the city?
Councilman Montalongo, it's not really a fee to do business with the city, that is merely as the chief indicated, the city incurs costs when it goes out and inspects, and it incurs time of the task force to go out, make sure that they have the adequate equipment. So it's not a situation where they are paying to get on the list, they are merely compensating the city for the time and expense it took so we can properly regulate the industry.
I just, we've not done this in the past, it just seems like a kind of a slippery slope because I could probably see us going down that road of trying to get on a city's list if you want to be a painter, drywaller, plumber, electrical, that you're going to have to pay $250 to be on a list to do business with the city. It'd be something I wouldn't be in favor of. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussions on this first reading? If not, we would have a motion to receive and file. Councilmember Ali seconded, Councilmember Seer. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Nineteen-three ninety-five is a request to concur with a request to receive and file a first reading of an ordinance amending Appendix A relating to commercial light industrial uses as special uses in the Class C large-scale commercial district.
Thank you. Director Black?
Thank you, Mayor. This proposal before you is designed to expand the potential uses that could occur within our large-scale C2 districts. So, for example, these are mostly the districts that have large shopping centers, the big-box stores in the newer parts of town. Right now, the uses of those spaces are typically, as you would expect, commercial, you know, shopping stores, home goods stores, that type of particular use. When those particular buildings become vacant, in the last decade or so, it has become difficult to fill them because there are not so many retail users anymore moving into spaces that large. So every so often, there is a good reuse of a building like that, and two examples in town is the reuse of the old Case merchandise building on Pioneer Parkway that was converted to office use, and then what is currently going on with the old Cup food store on Knoxville, also a conversion to office use. So those are both fantastic projects, but they're few and far between. What this ordinance amendment would do is, it would allow some light industrial uses in these C2 districts as a special use. So the protection is still there for the city council to have the final word on that. But just for example, light industrial uses as defined in our ordinance are light manufacturing and assembly of equipment such as musical instruments, medical dental goods, orthopedic medical appliances, optical goods, et cetera. So it's, think of it as kind of clean manufacturing and assembly use. So, all this would simply do is expand the potential uses so that the owners of these buildings would have options beyond just retail and office uses.
Okay, thank you. Questions, discussion? Councilmember Kelly?
Director Black, just perhaps for my own information, currently or in ordinances like this, the special uses that are anticipated are laid out in advance? Or could today somebody come for one of these, at one of these sites, and request a special use, under current ordinance, request a special use for a light industrial facility?
Thank you, Councilman. So currently, if the owner of a property that is Zone C2 approached us and asked for a light industrial use, we would tell them that is not allowed either as a permitted use or as a special use. Their only option would be to petition for a rezoning, so take that entire parcel and change the zoning from commercial to industrial, which then creates the potential for other issues because there are more noxious industrial uses than we are anticipating here. So what this would do is allow that if someone did come to us and say, "I would like to put a light assembly or manufacturing use in this old commercial space," then we could say to them, "That is possible, it is a special use, it would require approval by the city council, but it can be done."
So perhaps to reiterate for me, in a Class C2 district, the potential special uses are already laid out?
Correct.
Thank you.
Good. Councilmember Ali?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Director Black, just curious, is there, was this prompted by any particular requests from a local businessperson? Is there somebody waiting in the wings, or did you just anticipate that this might?
The, Councilwoman, this is not attached to any particular request. You know, there may be people waiting in the wings, but no one that has contacted me. This was just simply as the planning staff sat down and kind of took a look around the community. Obviously, the issue of having large vacant commercial spaces is an ongoing issue. You know, they're typically now referred to as gray fields, just because they're large parking lots, large gray buildings without a whole lot of use to them, and we felt that this might be a good way to try and expand the potential uses without getting into something that would be incompatible with other commercial uses.
So you're just being innovative?
I think that's another department in the city, but yes, I'll take credit.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion on this item, first reading? For now, we'll accept a motion to receive and file. Councilman Reganbach seconded by Councilman Kelly. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We're at unfinished business. Nineteen-three sixty-four is a request for a receive and file on a report back by, regarding the July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019, annual report of the solid waste contract.
Okay. Director Powers?
Counselors, obviously you can hear me better tonight than the last time I was here, and that's a little bit, I'm actually cracking a little bit, not as much, and I guess I'll apologize for that, I probably should have asked for somebody to pinch-hit for me. That, and I think you'll find in the report back, two points. One, Councilor Ruckregel, excuse me, you guy, you asked a specific question relative to bulky waste tonnage, and that's not a requirement in the contract, but we did ask PDC what that was, and they estimated fifty to sixty bulky pickups per day, and the daily number increases early spring, summer. So that's the answer we got. The second and larger change that you see is, the report back, we consider an abbreviated report, or I would say a more succinct report that just speaks to the deliverables of the contract, rather than maybe an over-the-top presentation that I tried to do last time with a voice that wasn't nearly this good. That being said, I think going forward, actually, I know going forward, that's what you would expect, is what you got in your package. You will see the deliverables that are in the contract that you've all seen before when we were in negotiation. We will provide those as numbers. If you have questions, we'll stand by and answer them. If there's a deliverable that's exceeded, obviously, we'll point that out. If there's one deficient, we'll point that out. If it's met, I believe you could read it and do what you would like with it. So with that said, I believe you have a five-page actual with content report that summarizes the presentation and the contract that we currently have with PDC, and I can go deeper into that, but again, I've done that already. If you have questions, I'll stand by for them.
Any questions for the Director? Councilman Grab?
Thank you, Mayor Artis. I don't have any questions about this, and with the permission of the Chair, I would like to ask about another document that was placed on our desk. And that was the snow and ice plan. Would you like to make commentary on any salient points that we should be alerted to that would indicate a change in how we've been doing things?
Maybe, maybe we'll, since we're under unfinished business, we could wrap this one on the waste, and then we'll make sure the Director stays here and we'll go into ice.
Thanks.
Is that okay? Thank you. Any additional questions for the report on solid waste? And I'm seeing none, so we'd have a motion to receive and file. Councilman Ruckregel seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Thank you. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes with eight ayes, no nays, no abstentions. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we are still at unfinished business?
Councilman Grab?
Yes. Any changes that we need to be aware of as it relates to the snow and ice plan for this winter?
I would say yes, and probably, well, the biggest, the added route, that Cy Maroon, when he did his presentation, we added a route up north. We didn't add equipment, but we did change route to be more efficient. Another change is, we've added some of our, another piece of equipment that allows us to brine more, or create, which is basically saltwater. Our proposal is to brine in neighborhoods pre-storm where we don't anticipate rain, and the brine then would melt the snow, hence reducing the number of times we would go into the neighborhoods and snow reaching two inches or more. So that's probably the biggest change we'll see, and we ordered that tank, I believe it should be, I think it's in, we're getting the equipment outfitted now, so you'll start seeing that type of treatment, but that was maybe the two biggest changes to snow and ice.
Use of brine then this year?
I would hope more, of much more use because it's pennies on the dollar to make brine. In fact, if, when we modernize our facilities, when we get to where we're washing our trucks, we'll recover what comes off the trucks to make more brine.
Director, do you anticipate any change in our proactive movements through the neighborhoods as we anticipate an approaching storm, doing more proactive work before the storm hits?
That would be the brining.
That would be the brine?
Unless we, if we anticipate rain, again, there's no sense in brining, but if we know that there's snow coming and it's going to be primarily snow, we will brine.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any additional unfinished business? We're on unfinished business. Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
We're at new business?
New business to come before the council. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted to mention a couple of quick things. Well, the first thing, we were going to have a report about communication from Stacy Peterson, Mr. Manager. Is that still going to happen tonight? If we recall, January 1st, we'd indicated we were going to... Stacy, if you could come up front and give us an update on where we are with our communication to the public via the public access TV channel?
Absolutely, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Moore. Currently, as we've discussed in previous meetings, the city has purchased a software program called Tightrope. Tightrope is a signage, a digital signage program that you see often in hotel rooms, for example, that provides the opportunity to put up meetings, streams, allowing information that would be of an urgent nature to be announced on public access. You can also put meeting notices, which was one thing that I know was of particular interest. We've had a few little technical hiccups in getting the server to work, but I'm happy to say that I've been working with the staff at our public access station, and I think we've kind of gotten past that. So now, the only thing we have to do is kind of learn how to use the software. I think that we are still on track for that January 1st launch, that is my hope. I will be having a conversation with the staff, the program director in Champaign, Illinois. Champaign has a very robust, in fact, they've got, I believe, six public access channels, and they're using this exact same software. So my hope is that we start off kind of basic, so we're using it, and then we're able to enhance it as I gain a little bit more familiarity. I'd also suggest that maybe we have somebody in IS as a backup, so we at least have our bases covered in the event that I can't schedule things on there. So hopefully, January 1st, if we have any other kind of technical scuffles, maybe a little bit after that, but I don't really anticipate this dragging out much longer than that.
Well, thank you so much because that's going to be huge, reaching out to our community. I know you do a great job with the Facebook page and the website, but there's a lot of folks who don't, aren't into technology like that, but they will watch TV, and so this is going to really be helpful, and because we're going to always be conveying information to them, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
The other thing I had wanted to mention, I wanted to thank Pamela Rumba, who was, is the last executive director of Commonplace, their staff and the Board of Directors for all that they have done for our community. Commonplace has been an institution, if you will, on the south side of Peoria. on the south side of Peoria. They were doing things before a lot of other organizations were doing it, and helping those who were most at need, the after-school program, the GED programs, there was a lot going on there. And so it's going to be, we're going to miss them when they're gone. Fortunately, Neighborhood House, who is also on the south side of Peoria, is picking up all of their programming. Everything that they've been doing in the past will continue at Neighborhood House. They have the additional space. It's a more ADA compliance space as well, and so there's a lot of advantages with Neighborhood House, but I will tell the folks at Commonplace that you will be missed, and we hope that all those individuals who were so dedicated to coming and volunteering and donating to Commonplace continues to do that through Neighborhood House, because the programming will continue there as well. And then finally, as I talked earlier, I wanted to just reemphasize that the north side, the north valley and the south side, the southern, the south end, have a lot of things this, for 2019, you'd be very proud of that's happening in the communities. I mentioned the Greeley School with Jonathan and Nikki Romaine, the Mercado that's opened over there with Andy Diaz, the Ronald McDonald House, the Women's Club, and the Armory. A lot of these things would not have happened had it been, had it not been for private support, with city support as well. But these items that I've just mentioned, including Habitat for Humanity, they've been doing some phenomenal work on the north side. And if you haven't driven through the north valley in a long time, you need to take the time to see that there's a lot of activity, there's a lot of excitement about what's happening there, large and small-scale excitement. And that is the same kind of excitement that I'm hoping to continue on the south side with those things that I mentioned, with MacArthur Corridor, right outside of Martin Luther King Junior Park, NAZP and Urban League, they reside on that street, and they are very engaged and involved with what's happening there. The Park District has come to the forefront, also wanting to be a partner in what's happening there. And I will be coming to this council in the new year with those individuals and institutions who are interested in those buildings that I talked about, and hoping that we can provide avenues for them to open up on those, in those locations. And I just want to reemphasize to the community that this is a concept plan, that the city doesn't have the wherewithal to do this, but we can help a lot, and we want to encourage others who may have funding and are interested in seeing the south side come back to its former glory that Levetta Rica talks about all the time, that we're open for business. And to that end, I've asked our Assistant City Manager, Deborah Ratler, to look at those properties on Western and on MacArthur Highway that the city owns that are vacant, there are no properties on them at all, to write those up and provide those to the community as requests for inquiries, to determine if somebody is interested in doing some of the things that were in that South Village Plan or on Western, and perhaps if they bring to us an idea that is born out of that South Village Plan, we could provide the land to do that. So there's a lot of things we can do. The mayor used to say years ago that we're open for business, that we want to say yes, we're not here just to say no. We want to work with people, and I really would encourage, once Deborah has that information available, that it will be communicated via the communication method that Stacy talked about, and we will also be placing that information on our website. And with that, the first district has a lot to be proud of in 2019, and I want to thank each of you around this horseshoe, because you made this happen. I could not have done this by myself. I'm just one person. I want to thank the community for all that they have done. I say to the community, "Stop asking people for stuff. Let's do it ourself and show everyone else how it can be done." And then the city will also, we will shame the city into helping more, right? So thank you all for what you've done, and have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much. New business? Any additional new business? I'm seeing none. I have two quick ones. First of all, councilmembers, I put a handout on your desk tonight about 22VA. For the listening and viewing audience, I would invite you to also go to our website where you can see this information posted as well, but there is an art exhibit called 22VA. It's a veterans' art exhibit, and I'm just, they have it perfectly expressed here, I'm just going to read it to you. "You can view a wide range of artistic expression, all created by our veterans. Some were artists before, while some are using art to understand their military experience. The exhibit is organized by 22VA, a group of talented veteran artists that want to help other veterans express themselves through visual and creative arts. 22VA wants to help reduce the number of veteran suicides, which claims the lives of 22 veterans a day. This equates to around 30 suicides per 100,000 veterans, a rate that is more than double the rate for the civilian population." I had the opportunity today with Mike Reagan, who is one of the artists, as well as a distinguished veteran who comes here every year, and we give him a proclamation to support 22VA, and I can tell you that I wish I would have had more time. It took me over an hour to go through this, and I was almost breathless when I left, when I saw the art from all these different veterans and how they use that to try to express a lot of the emotion and just a lot of the feelings that they brought back after serving our country. And these aren't, these aren't just veterans from recent war on terror. There's items in there that go all the way back to World War I and II. So I would encourage folks to, the information, again, is available on our website. The art exhibit goes from December 7 through January 30, so you still have about six weeks. It's a main downtown library, and it's an outstanding exhibit. I would encourage everyone to try to attend. Secondly, it was brought to my attention before the meeting that this is going to be the last meeting, or the last meeting that he's going to cover, being H. Wayne Wilson, who has on and off through the years sat back there and reported for WCBU. So H. has been in the business for over 50 years. I don't know how, he must have started when he was, what, H., about five? But H. has been a very respected member of the media for a long, long time. He was also a former news director at CBU, and I can just say on behalf of the city council, we'll miss looking back there and seeing you, and congratulations on your next endeavors, H., but thank you very much. Councilmember Moore? No, didn't want to do that, okay. Seeing no further new business, Madam Clerk?
We'd be at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
Thank you. We're at citizens to address. We just need your name for the record. We have a five-minute speaking limit, and as Levetta makes her way up to the podium, I can tell everyone that the council members really look forward to the last meeting of the year, because when we come in, we have Levetta's famous candy that is, it's like crack. It is, it's hard, it's hard to stop eating. And I can tell you too that over the years, when we've had meetings twice this long, most council members had an empty bag by the end of the meeting, but they were all so wired that they couldn't sit down. But Levetta, just before you say whatever you're going to say, thank you for the candy, and also, and I say this in advance, because our rule typically is, we don't, we don't talk during Citizens to Address, we listen, so I'm not violating council policy here. Thank you for the candy, and thank you for your lifelong devotion to our community, and especially to the south side of Peoria.
I'm glad to be here. I missed being here every week with you people. And it's not because I want to not come. It's not because I've lost interest in my neighborhoods or my area, it's just that this old body is forsaking me. My heart is still here, but my body just won't let me do what I used to do all the time. I do want to thank anybody who had anything to do with my wheelchair ramp. Because I'm low-income, I qualified for the city to build me a wheelchair ramp. I was crawling up and down my steps for quite a while, and they came and built me a wheelchair ramp, and boy, did they do a good job. I've complained about a lot of the things, but this city really, really built me a wonderful wheelchair ramp, and I'm really happy to use it. So Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I don't know if I'll be able to come back anymore. I'll try, but just as you know, I'm watching you on television and trying to still keep up with some of the stuff. Take care, everybody, and I'll see you.
Thank you, Levetta. Next, we have Noemi Medina.
Hello, my name is Noemi Medina. I'm a current member of the Light of the World Church. Mine and my brother Michael's, who will speak to you as well, are representatives of the Light of the Church, and we want to do as our name suggests, to be light in the world. Our desire is to make an impact in this community. In the near future, we would like to establish health affairs and APS programs that will be free to the public. APS, Association of Professionals and Studies, is a national nonprofit organization that promotes higher education to disadvantaged students. With the help of professionals and students in our community, we wish to establish programs that will help senior high school students with their college and FAFI applications. Also, start tutoring programs that will help students from elementary to high school with their studies. To conclude, we wish to invite you to a concert that we will do on the 14th of this month, that will be located in 200 Northwest Water Street here in Peoria. It is, it will be a choir interpretation of the anniversary of our Apostolic Leader, Nelson Joaquin Garcia. The purpose of this concert is to show our community who we are and who we represent. Our desire this night is to invite you to join us this day. Thank you for your attention and good night.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Chavez.
Good evening. My name is Michael Chavez, resident of Peoria, Illinois, and a member of the Light of the World, as well as my sister said. And I just want to give you a brief rundown of what our mission is, coming here to Peoria as the Light of the World. The mission, the goal that we have, which is not only here in Peoria, but is nationwide, we are greatly grateful with our Lord that we are part of a lot of 58 nations as of now, and nationwide all over, across the whole world, bringing the message, and what we do, just give you a quick rundown, is to make the message of the spiritual salvation known to all, people without discrimination. For this is good and acceptable before God, our Savior, who desires all men to be saved and to come to the knowledge of the truth. You can see this in the first letter of Timothy, chapter 2, verse 3 and 4. Also to contribute to peace and fraternity among men in all nations through the gospel of Jesus Christ. Peace I leave with you, my peace I give to you. You can see this in John, chapter 14, verse 27, and it says, "Reconcile humanity with God by subjection to the divine laws, to infuse men with the hope to eternal life," that God was in Christ reconciling the world to himself, not taking men into account for their sins. You can see this in the second letter of Corinthians, chapter 5, verse 19. And to finalize, instill a sense of personal, familial, civic, and social responsibilities to it all believers through the universal principle, principle of Christian fraternity. If any man says, "I love God," and hates a brother, he is a liar, on first letter to John, chapter 4, verse 20. This is just to bring what our goal is to bring here in Peoria, open our doors to, the church wants to open the doors, not only to Hispanic community, but to anybody that wants to learn and know and turn their lives into Jesus Christ. We want to be able to be that help and give them a little bit of our own testimony. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we are in executive session.
Attorney Liest?
Yes, Your Honor. A motion would be appropriate pursuant to Section 2C2 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, which exempts the discussions relative to collective bargaining as well. A motion would be appropriate pursuant to 2C11, which exempts discussions relative to pending or imminent litigation. And finally, a motion would be appropriate pursuant to 2C21, which exempts discussions of previously closed minutes.
And before we make the motion, the second, I would like to acknowledge that we will never hear another recommendation to go into executive session, because this will be Corporation Counsel Liest's last meeting, and we wish him well on his new endeavors. Thank you very much. So we have a motion to go into executive session by Councilmember, excuse me, Ruckregel, and seconded by Councilmember Seer. Please cast your ballot. That motion passes unanimously, and we have a motion to adjourn. Councilman Seer, seconded by Councilman Ruckregel. Please cast your ballots. That motion also passes unanimously. We'd like to thank H. Wayne Wilson and his listening audience at WCBU, as well as Cable Channel 22. On behalf of the city council and the city manager and